Welcome to another year in Southfield Public Schools. The College Union of Southwest Regional Education Support. My name is Gerald B. Kennedy and I serve as President of the Board.
Brad Williams, I serve as Vice President of the Board.
Yone Smith, Secretary.
Debbie Robinson, Treasurer.
Bert Hess, Trustee.
Mr. Louis Trustee.
Michael Cole, Trustee.
Wanda Luke Robinson, Superintendent.
Debbie Truss, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Linda Ward, Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
Okay, and keeping a record of our proceedings tonight is Nicole Christie. She's handling all the audio and video presentations for the board as part of her. Tonight, we'd like to also announce that we have a new partnership with City Cable Channel Fifteen. And we have on video Lisa Hawkins and Kit Pomos. And on the audio, we have Mr. Art Ford. We want to thank them as well. Um, Nicole, could you give us a quick question?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's just dive right in. Uh, we get right into the staff and student recognition. First, we have Ms. Delma Smith, who is the 2013-2014 Michigan Associate for Computer Users and Learning. McCall, who received a grant of $1,811. She is from senior. Uh, Ms. Smith.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Delma Smith and this is my colleague and this is Grant Julie Lambert. Uh, we wrote this grant this summer for McCall, um, to integrate technology into a social studies curriculum. And, um, what we were trying to do was make this an authentic kind of project-based project, uh, where students would have some kind of program that simulates real life. And so what we did was we, um, devised a program where we're going to divide kids into groups to simulate the function of a travel agency. And in this travel agency, the students are going to be vying for bids. And, um, the students are going to research and analyze specific cultures and they will evaluate their findings and synthesize that information and present it in an extensive, uh, travel report to an executive board. But along the way, students are also going to create Google accounts. They're going to use, uh, utilize Google Drive, uh, Google Docs, Google Presentations. They'll do calendars and learn how to, uh, create forms, online forms for surveys and a lot of collaboration. Students are going to, um, make global connections and we hope that we can make some connections, um, across the globe to some different, um, travel roles. Um, our kids will also learn how to use Zoom, PowerPoint, Google Earth and do some Skys and chats and blogs and Google Hangout. And Google Hangout is where, uh, you have an opportunity to do some video conferencing. So we wanted to do that right from the classroom. The students will learn how to use green screens and cameras and, uh, teleprompters so that they can create authentic commercials. And these commercials will be a part of the package that they present in their travel agency. Now, the expected outcome is that, um, with the onset of, uh, excuse me, the onset of Common Core, we want to make sure that our kids are ready for that task. Um, and we oftentimes hear about employees complaining that students are not ready for 20% of your workforce. So we wanted to make sure that we presented it with something that would help them get to that point. And one of the things that we find that kids are usually lacking in are force, communication, creativity, critical thinking skills and decision-making skills and collaboration. So, um, we know that, um, we can't make this shift by ourselves, so we are looking for support in our communities, um, television stations, travel agencies and people of different ethnic backgrounds to help the kids do their research. And hopefully, by the time our kids are done with this, this will help them make a critical shift in their education, uh, they can apply it to their lives and hopefully in education, uh, secondary education and workforce.
From the social studies standpoint, what I hope the students will gain is that there is a world beyond high school, there's a world beyond Southfield and a world beyond Michigan. I've lived in four different countries and, uh, I've traveled overseas, but primarily I've worked. And those were some of the best years of my life. I met the most fascinating people and what I hope the students gain is that the world really is a wonderful place and opportunity is abounding. It's out there and you have to make the connection and you have to realize it's there. So hopefully by studying this in social studies, they'll gain a true passion for international and, um, local communities.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Next item on your agenda, uh, on September sixteenth and seventeenth, uh, next week, Dr. Cook Robinson will be attending the second meeting of the Aspen Institute Task Force on Learning and Internet in Washington, DC. The event is sponsored by the John D. and Captain T. MacArthur Foundation. The task force is comprised of distinguished business, nonprofit and academic leaders from across the country. So, Dr. Cook, can you give us a little background?
Yes, it's a very interesting committee. We are actually serving as the national commission to the president on internet and learning. And interestingly enough, I'm the only educator in the group. Uh, the rest are all from business, the VP of Google, Facebook, Mozilla, they're all there, um, helping us to try to figure this out along with several, um, university professors. In addition to participating on the task force, they are going to send a crew to Southfield on October fourteenth to shadow me and to get some, they're going, this film will be shown nationally, it will highlight our children using online learning. And the schools that will be involved will be Grace Lally, MacArthur, the Buffy Center, University High School Academy and Burnham. So I'm looking forward to our second meeting. We'll have four meetings this year. And then there will be a paper that will be presented to the Ari Duncan and the president on our primary.
Okay, now I have to admit, I'm getting a little bit concerned about Ari Duncan and President Bob McCall being to Washington, uh, this entire.
(Laughter).
Um, also, uh, for your information, uh, and this is from the AASA, uh, which is the, um, art, article for, uh, that was written by our own superintendent that's in the latest edition of the MFA Leader, uh, magazines, uh, and I believe they have copies for anybody that wants them. And this is, uh, the article is, "Witches to Ensure the Safe Path to the Twenty-First Century Students to the Future," by our own Dr. Wanda Luke Robinson. So, yeah. So now we get to recording our, uh, student representatives. And, um, this year, um, we have three new, um, members who are representing their various school clubs. We have return, um, return members as well. So being a veteran, I almost feel like I need to do, uh, one of those, uh, minor, like a few before the basketball game. And now, I'm still being academic campus. We have Mr. Kennedy Armstrong.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kenny Armstrong, your student representative at Southwest Regional Academic Campus. I hope that you all had a refreshing and wonderful summer because I am ready to get back into the school year and I know they are, exciting. Um, I look forward to sharing all the upcoming events and achievements at Southwest Regional Academic Campus with all of you. I hope you all come to all the meetings, exciting and fun and just hear stuff like Mrs. Lambert and members of Southfield, Southfield great ideas coming up in our school district. So, if we have too much of an introduction, I'd not be interested. So.
I really get this morning to introduce me, so when we meet the school, not a whole lot to tell us right now. Uh, next up, we have Mr. David Cole from Southfield High School. Wait, tell us a little bit about yourself, you mean, you mean, years?
Hi, hi, how you guys doing? My name's David Cole. Um, I graduated in class of twenty fourteen. I'm from Southfield High School. Um, I'm a part of many things such as National Honors of Science, I'm the president of Scouts Plus, um, I'm the Southwest J newspaper's president's counsel, and I previously left if I stopped doing that. Um, I know you weren't supposed to be visiting me today, but I think it's important to say that today we found out that our Southwest J newspapers received a George A. Gallagher Award of Excellence for our school newspaper and that's one of the biggest national awards for me in high school.
And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, that's not the first time this is often an annual thing that we do. They actually win, uh, that Gallagher Awards, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have Mr. Gregory Cunningham from University High School Campus.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Gregory Cunningham. I'm the school representative for University High School Campus. Um, senior, I am part of NHS, any class board and other clubs, Chess Club, United Group Christ Club.
That's about it. And if we all just, I have to introduce you. Looking forward to this year and being with you guys, so thank you for having me. And, uh, last item, we see, I have Mr. Savannah Green from Southfield Lakefront High School.
Hello. Hi. Uh, Savannah, from Southfield Lakers. Uh, many wonderful things at school, through the Congress, um, vice president of class board for the band, um, I'm also the drum major for our band, so come see me perform. Um, I'm in Scouts Plus, lots of cool volunteer work, I'm there, finding anywhere. I love talking about myself, I can go on and on, but that's one good thing. Any questions?
You know, it's always, um, encouraging to me to see, you know, some of our, when our students step up and assume, um, over leadership. And we all have to, you know, hold them up and, and let them know that it's difficult, you know, when you step out, you know, there to be a leader, you know, you know, the definition of leader is sometimes, you know, you're out in front and you're leading, so there shouldn't be people behind you, but when you turn around, there's nobody there, you just kind of take it off, walk by yourself. I've kind of been in that position, uh, walking by myself. And so, you know, it's, it's brave and noble, you can step up there and it's something for all of us to, you know, move praise for, and I do, so congratulations and thank you for stepping up. Uh, at this time, we'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent in her district. What's the board of your opinion?
Thank you. On August twenty-sixth, the teachers returned to the district. And the same enthusiasm that you heard from our students this evening, I heard from the teachers. We were trying to have a mini, mini presentation. We could not quiet the teachers' house. They were so busy talking to each other and sharing information and just having a good time. Mayor Lawrence was there, she greeted us as well as our board, Chartwell provided lunch and the Southfield High Band and the Levy Band serenaded to the path. So we had a very synergistic opening to school. I had an opportunity to follow that up by visiting all of the buildings on the first day and they were buzzing. So I'm glad to see that the teachers and the students were glad to come back to school. Also, on the first day of school, Dean Williams and I had an opportunity at five thirty AM in the morning to be at University High and to be on Channel Seven. They came to see how University High, um, was going to start the first day of school. So we had an opportunity to share highlights, not only of the University High School, but all the schools here in Southfield and let them know someone knows initiatives. And we particularly wanted to say thank you to Channel Seven because they came for something positive and you promised he'd come back and not when something negative happened, but to keep up with us on these initiatives. So I thought that was a very good opportunity to build relationships with Channel Seven who's right in our backyard. We also once again had our Step to Bus campaign and I think we have some pictures that we're going to share with you all, so. We had a very, very successful campaign. We collected over thirty thousand pieces of supplies for our initiative. You can see here, this is, you can see in the pictures, many of the volunteers, including myself, board members, staff and members from the community. Denso International employees once again had their competition between the buildings to see who could, uh, raise the most number of supplies. This is their third year with us. In addition to supplies, they also forward monies to us to buy things, other things that we might need. And this year, we presented to them an original piece of artwork. The artwork was created by Ms. Martha Young. She is a graduate, well, she's graduated already, she was a senior last year at Southwest Regional Academic Campus. And her teacher is Ms. Molly Igne. She did a beautiful crayon painting and we had it framed. And this painting that you see on the screen now is now in the hallway of Denso. And there's a plaque that says, "Thank you on behalf of all the children in the Southfield community from the Southfield World Education." Very, very meaningful. In addition to Denso, all the depot in Southfield worked with us. They let us pass out flyers at their, um, store and people who were going in and out bought supplies and also their monetary donations. The Michigan Mutual employees, they had a drive for us and we went over and picked up those supplies. And we want to say a thank you also to Durham who provided the buses. So they would bring the bus there for us with stuff. In addition, we want to say some thank yous to our sponsors as well as the volunteers. And I think we'll have a flyer here so you can see the many, many volunteers that came to help us, to stand out in the heat and collect supplies, to lift boxes. And I know several board members and I were lifting boxes over at Denso to help them to get the supplies on the bus. So we want to say thank you to all of you and to the board of education for responding to us. At this time, I'd like to invite to the podium, Mr. Gerald Jordan. Mr. Jordan has agreed to be one of the co-chairs for our milage campaign. And I'm not going to steal his time, I'm going, I'm going to invite him to the podium and let him do his.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello, how's it going?
Good.
Let me just give you a little bit of information about myself. I've been a resident of Southfield for, uh, twenty-five years. Uh, the reason why I moved to Southfield was because of two reasons, school and service, okay? And, uh, I'm very passionate about this movement because of the fact that, um, being a volunteer at Adler for twenty-five, going on twenty-five years, I've had the opportunity to have six children go through Adler, for five children that graduated from Southfield High School, okay? And five children that went to college. So I think I'm doing pretty good, okay? The last one just graduated and he's a aerospace engineering and mechanical engineering. And so I know that there's no such thing as a perfect parent, but I think I'm doing darn good, right? And because of that, that's why I have the passion I have for this milage that's coming up. So I'm the co-chair of the milage. I have a passion because it's, it's, it's a such thing of taking it for granted and we must not do that. We must, we must really take it serious, must get that message out so people understand that they need to vote yes. So that's what we're doing. We, we, we're organizing and, and I have some of the teachers from Adler and Thompson, uh, we painted up posters that we're going to be having, uh, holding up tomorrow when we have our little, uh, rally. And we've had the, uh, uh, some of the, uh, marching bands, we have Southfield Lakeside as a top of the high school, okay? And so we just want to get that message out. But there's two groups that we're really trying very hard to, to reach. Those groups are the senior citizens, okay? And Bernie Cass has been helping me out with that. We've been really, really getting that message out. And, uh, young people. Uh, some young people just, maybe they've never voted before or, or they could be living in an apartment. And I ended up knowing, someone told me, says, "Well, I live in an apartment, I don't pay taxes." I said, "That's all right. We need your yes vote." So we're trying to make sure we get that message out. We are so serious about this. We want you guys to take it very serious. We want a yes vote. We don't want it being a situation like some other cities where they took it for granted and it did not happen, not in Southfield. And the reason why is because I've seen the success from my children going through this school system. I know it's necessary, I know you're going to make it. I see a young person out there, I get so excited when I see them because I know that my five children went through and, and one of them was just a little shady in her, and, you know, a female, a female, she was a little shady in, in, in her, um, in her grade point average. Four of them came through with over three point five. And a daughter was a little lower than her, so she had some learning disabilities. But what we did is we got rid of a marching band. That marching band turned it around, okay? So that works as well. So I had three children in marching band and one was a drum major. So I know how exciting it is, I know how awesome it is to be a part of Southfield. That's why I'm so compassionate about this city of Southfield and about this school system. I think we have a PowerPoint. We have a little PowerPoint here. Well, this Southfield Public, uh, Milage, and we do have some, um, handouts that I want to, uh, pass out in some, uh, stick, you know, some, uh, things. Because we're, we're passionate about everyone. We did that same thing like, like Dr. Cook Robinson said, when we had, when we stepped to bus, we were all up and down that, that, that strip. We were in front of Best Buy, we went down to Myers, we were passing these, uh, this information out. Uh, a lot of people who, who came up didn't live in Southfield. But if they lived in Southfield, we made sure they got that information in their hands to take it back and get that information so they can absorb and understand what we said. Because one of the main things that people are asking right off the bat, they want to know is taxes going up. Know the taxes are not going up. And, and, and we let them know that the tax is not going up, it's just a renewal. And so we have a flyer here that's, that's going to explain that to you. So I just want to share that with you right now. What's on the ballot? A request to renew the current school operating milage. Did I, did I, uh, okay. I'm out of my mind, just, okay. A request to renew the current school operating milage rate of seventeen point six, three, four, five meals for six years, okay? So, so that right off the bat is letting you know where, how out we are, the transparency, the technicality. We're letting you know just exactly what that meal is and it's for six years. Why is milage renewed? Every district wants to have its locally voted milage in order to receive its full state school aid. This milage request represents about fifty percent of the school district's general fund revenue. So we're letting the people out there know that, hey, this school has to operate, has to have money to operate. Usually when we tell them that, we also share with them that we don't want to be in the same situation like Inkster, Hightown. I usually, if people say, "Oh, I'm voting." So we, so, but we have the information there that they have right in front of them to read so they can understand that we're just not talking, it, it, it's really what's going on. There you go. Uh, next. Why does the ballot language stay increased? By law, the ballot language must stay increased since the meals that were authorized in two thousand eight were expired. July first, two thousand fourteen, and the, and the milage will revert to zero. Taxes of this milage will not increase, but on its tax. Look for this proposal at the bottom of the ballot. So that's what we also let the people know as well. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, entries on that ballot. Make sure you turn it around, make sure you look for the school ballot because it's very important. Next. Uh, Southfield Public Schools has kept its promise and has not increased taxes. At a time of rising costs and severe reductions, state revenues, the board of education has adjusted its budget and cut costs by eighty million in the last six years. In spite of this, the district continues to offer quality programs for its students. So I let people know that, because when they, when they want to talk about the taxes and they want to talk about their house and, and, and they bring up all those other things, which all is legitimate. No, 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 I've been here twenty-five years. I've seen things change, you know, honestly, really want to be, and honestly, my house is underwater. But the point is that this city is only as good as the school system that we live in. And so in order for things to change, so if you hit rock bottom and go back up, we've got to make sure our school system is intact. I tell some parents, I say, "You know what I live for after twenty-five years of being here? I live for children on the street. When I see children playing, and children laughing, and children happy, I know the city of Southfield is on its way back up. And I know the city of Southfield Public Schools is on its way to continue to be a strong school system and provide what our children need." Okay, I think that's it. So that's, that's a quick line, my speech, okay?
Tonight, I'm going to have, um, I have technology coordinator, Mr. Wes Prescott, give us an update on the wireless project that the board approved for us back in May of two thousand thirteen and just let us know where we're at with that project today.
First of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm, uh, Wes Prescott, I'm the technology coordinator for Field Services. I don't know if I've had a chance to meet everyone up here, but I've had a chance to meet a lot of people in the audience. Um, first, I want to thank you for supporting the initiative back in May. Um, the wireless project is really laying the foundation for technology initiatives throughout the district. It's allowing increased access to technology in the classrooms for students and staff. Uh, currently, the project is about fifty-five percent complete. Um, there's a couple of different phases. The first one was coming in and wiring, doing any additional wiring that needs to be done for the access points. Uh, Black Fox was contracted for that cabling. The cabling is nearly complete in all buildings. As you know, we had, there was wireless sporadically placed throughout the district before and we've used as much cabling as we can to kind of reduce costs. The next phase is actually hanging the wireless access points. Southfield Lakewood and Southfield High School have all access points hung, configured, um, and working. Bernie has all the access points configured and installed and Thompson is configured and partially installed. Um, about two weeks ago, we kind of halted work on that project to get ready for the opening of school. Uh, we had our techs going around and setting up classrooms, setting up labs and making sure everything ran smoothly. Um, the project will resume shortly and is targeted to be completed, uh, November first. Um, there is an action item tonight for, uh, additional access points. Once we came in and actually did a physical survey of the district and the different buildings, um, we found that it was necessary to increase the number of access points by one hundred and sixteen in order to complete the project and, uh, have wireless coverage throughout the district. There's, anybody have any questions?
Um, with this wireless network, um, will there be yes user availability for parents or anyone else coming into the district to use, uh, the wireless network?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, what type of security, uh, are we going to put on there just to, you know, let the community know?
Yep, we have, uh, we have WPA security. It's an enterprise level security. In order to access the secure network, you have to have a username and password for Southfield Public Schools. Um, you'll log into the wireless with that username and password to the guest network. There will be a disclaimer, a splash screen, and that's what there is now that will pop up and just provide guidelines for the use of the wireless guest network.
And one last point, um, will the signal bleed out into the community or is it going to be contained, uh, to the campus exactly how, how far is the rating?
Um, it, it is contained for the most part to the campus, um, and to the, to the physical buildings. There is a little bit bleed outside of the buildings. Um, but with the way, the way the walls are constructed, um, it doesn't reach too far beyond the walls of the building.
You said, "The way these walls are constructed, I can't hear eighteen T's."
I know. Verizon, no better.
Whatever. Thank you. Thank you. Stay in a parent meeting, PTA meetings or things of that nature, um, to give them access plus, you know, we also have, um, our SBS application. Those of you that don't know, we have an SBS app for your smartphones that you can utilize to communicate throughout the district. So that's another application that we utilize on that wireless network. So once you're on the campus, it actually gives you greater access to it without having to use up your 4G network kind of moving to the conference.
Thank you, Wes. The rest of my report is contained in the consult agenda.
Good evening. Welcome back staff, welcome back parents. Uh, this evening, Lord, the majority of my report is contained in the consult agenda. Just a brief negotiations update. We do continue negotiations with our final bargaining unit, which is the MESSCABRUE. Uh, we meet on Thursday to continue, I think that's our sixth door, sixth session so far. So we, uh, standing at the helm.
Thank you. And good evening, Lord, as well as our community. One of the exciting things that occurs at the beginning of school here is a wonderful opportunity for teachers as well as for our students to learn about each other and to learn information that can help in the learning process. And one of the things that is occurring this year is the introduction of our math assessment. That is actually commenced this week where our students are learning about how to effectively take that assessment and our teachers are guiding them. To help our parents, and we are going to offer a parent meeting and an opportunity for parents to learn more about the math assessment and actually get online, experience that. And that is the screen that indicates that the math assessment will be held on, for parents, on September thirtieth, Monday, September thirtieth, Monday, September thirtieth, from six thirty until eight o'clock at University High School. And, um, and so that will be very exciting for our parents. The other thing that we're going to be doing, and let's get this right here. Here, here it is. At the parent meeting, we're gonna be learning about the math assessment. But another very critical and important learning that I'd like to share with our parents is about our new accountability scorecard. Many of our parents understand AYT, they've heard about it, they associate No Child Left Behind with that, but I'd like for them to gain more information. So we have a, a lot of good inside information we're gonna share at our parent meeting on May thirtieth. I'm announcing it now, we'll be announcing it even more. Uh, this is just the first time that we wanna introduce it to our parents because we want you there. And so, we have a full event and we're gonna have just a little fluke anything for you too. The next thing I would like to announce is related to Saturday School. And as we provide each fall and every spring an opportunity for our students to engage in credit recovery and tutorial enrichment classes, but we have to register. And registration for Saturday School will be held, um, this upcoming September twenty-seventh at Michigan First. And we will also have a second registration for parents if they missed it on the twenty-seventh, which will be held Tuesday, October the first. And the reason we're having the registration is because the programming will start. Um, for our high school students, the programming will start on October fifth. This is for students who are engaged in credit recovery and who are taking, um, those various courses to remediate. And our tutorial and enrichment program will begin on October the nineteenth. So just the introduction, you will again receive more information, but I can't help myself by ensuring that you get this at the very beginning of the year because, again, we want our children, our children there and we want our parents at these meetings. At this time, I would like for Mr. Edward Hill and Ms. Andrea Hamler to come to the podium because we had a tremendous summer school program. And Mr. Hill was the principal of the K eight program and Ms. Hamler was the principal of the high school. And they have some enlightening information and data and pictures and all that to share with you and I'm excited with what they provided and their representation of that information now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How you doing tonight? Um, it was a pleasure working with Ms. Hamler and the staff this summer, um, in summer school. A lot of people ask me, you know, how was it working summer school? Did you have breaks and so forth? And one of the things I say to them is that it was just nice coming together with, uh, staff from across the district. We, uh, didn't really know each other, to teach kids from across the district that everybody don't know. And it was just a positive experience. So we put together a pretty good program and I think the results did show. And, um, you know, from the PowerPoint, you'll see some of the things that we've done. I'd like to thank my lead teachers also. The K eight program had the opportunity to, um, host lead teachers to assist me with the program and they were excellent. Um, I had two of my staff in Bernie, Ms. Stephanie George, which is here tonight, also Ms. Gladys Ramsey. Stephanie teaches fourth grade, Ms. Ramsey teaches resource, uh, she's a resource teacher for my K five. Also had the pleasure to have Ms. Tracy Jenny from Adler, third grade teacher. Those three collaborated and they got me through. So thank you guys publicly. Thanks you for all, it was great. It was wonderful. Uh, Mr. Bob Oliver also, um, secretary from SREC. Keep a lookout, Mario, we're coming for her. She, she was good. She was, she was excellent. Next slide, please. The program was a six-week program, ran from June eighteenth to July forty-fifth. We worked from eight to two. Uh, we hosted three hundred and fifty-eight students in the program, K eight. Um, it was mostly elementary students. We did have a nice amount of middle school students there. And I have to say that the building did a wonderful job of selecting the students that came there for the opportunity to learn. It was good. Uh, during bus stops, thank you guys for the busing. Um, students were fed breakfast and lunch. And we also had the opportunity to work with the community food program also. They were there eating in summer school. And they intermingled with our students and staff and it was a wonderful experience. Um, the math test, Dr. Wood mentioned the math earlier and we utilized the math. Uh, we did some pre and post testing to analyze data, see how the students were doing. Uh, the pre-test data came from the spring math testing for first through eighth grade. So we looked to see how the students fare at that point in time and we administered the math again in the summer. So our summer school students got a form for testing. Okay? So we looked at the spring scores. We gave the math test again for first through eighth grade during the fifth week of summer school. Just looking at the results, there's no slide that'll be coming up soon so you can see how many students actually did improve from the summer program. Uh, for our kindergarten, we wanted data on the long term. So we administered MLTP and the Summer Success Math Assessment for our kindergarten students. So they were tested throughout the whole summer, guys. And then we're back into the fall to be administered the math once again in the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. Uh, kindergarten assessment, MLTP and the Summer Success. As you can see, um, the data here represents the percentage of students that did improve from the pretest to the posttest. So for example, uh, the first part you see here for math, forty-three percent of the students increased or improved and then sixty-five, uh, well, forty-three percent of the students from the pretest and then sixty-five point five from the posttest. So you see, you have some improvements there. And across the board, they did improve in each of the areas in approximately a four to five week span. So the teachers were focused, they were working, they were, um, just trying to get the kids to do what they need to do to improve. Next slide, please. The first through eighth grade, uh, students, and these are actually the percentage of students that increased from the spring math assessment to the summer math assessment. So for first grade, um, in math, and you see on the side there, you have the Master Reading Language Arts, you have fifty-eight percent of the students that improved in math in first grade and forty-nine percent in reading. Uh, for second grade, sixty-four percent improved from the spring administration to the summer and then fifty-six percent in reading. You can see across the board, a significant amount of our students did improve in basically four to five weeks. Next slide, please. Technology. I wanted the students to be, um, basically using technology in the relevant areas. We had the opportunity to schedule our K five students twice a week. They went in to use the Edmitum technology package, which includes Seti Island, Plato, uh, Reading Ed and Education City. So they were exposed to that at least twice a week throughout the summer. The middle school students had technology every day. They were exposed to playtime and, you know, I think it was a pretty good experience, they had some really good teachers and, um, I think the students enjoyed it and they loved the life. Uh, I think a few pictures up here, one more. Next slide, please. Small group instruction. We had the opportunity to, um, assign a parent professional to each classroom to assist with class size and assisting with the students. It was wonderful. The class, uh, parents worked with small groups to help the students to build their talents and what they need to know. And so, um, that was a wonderful opportunity, y'all. Next slide. Parenting activities. I want the teachers to, you know, kinda practice and get used to some of the things that Dr. Wood and her staff has been providing PD for throughout the summer. Worked with small groups, utilizing DI. Um, we collect lesson plans every day so the staff that was there, they didn't get, you know, off target for what they're used to doing. We expected to do out the summer also. Next slide, I think there's two more pictures here. We also conducted surveys, um, at the end of the program. We got information from our students, from our staff and from our parents. Here's some of the results you see here. Um, we asked some good questions and fair questions and got some good feedback. Uh, the program was helpful, lessons and activities were enjoyable, staff members were helpful, and the student programs were helpful. We got a significant amount of yeses here. Next slide, please. Great three to eight students survey, you can see the results here. I think the students enjoyed themselves. It was a wonderful opportunity and I hope, I hope they go back to their next next school and perform well. And I hope to get emails and phone calls from you guys saying thank you for, um, turning the students around. Next slide. Uh, parent survey, survey, we sent these home. We got quite a few back, so thanks to the parents. And our center for the students reading the math, but we did get some back there and these are the results of the parent survey. Next slide. Staff, I think, enjoyed themselves. Um, they were excellent. We did make them work, but, uh, I think they had a, a great experience, um, in summer school. And the last slide. This is just from the feedback that we received from all of the surveys. Some of them that stick out were, uh, the parents in every classroom were very effective. Uh, technology availability in every classroom. Students' performance actually increased over a, you know, four, five week period. And last one. Uh, coffee and good, while the fact that it's something that we hope that Bernie, um, students are rewarded, um, you know, for doing things good. Teacher sees it or they hear about it, they actually give them a certificate. And we displayed those in the library out in front of, um, Southfield High School and he's just some of the recipients and the kind of, you can see some of the coffee and good certificates that were handed out. And the last one, all-star students. Every teacher has the opportunity to choose, uh, male and the female students that's in their classrooms that are gonna be the all-star students for the summer. And these students receive gift certificates and awards at the end of the program. So it was a great experience, a wonderful opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Wood, for, um, allowing us to help you guys, help our kids, and, um, we look forward to how we do it again. I think, you know, one more slide, a few pictures here. Now, Ms. Hamler.
Thank you, Ed. And again, good evening to everyone. And as Ed said, we really did enjoy working with each other. I had his back, he had my back. Even though he was Title One and I was high school, you know, we were still there to support one another. And so, I appreciate his support for the summer as well. So I worked with the high school summer school program and the middle school intervention program. Again, I had a wonderful secretary. So I told Sandy and Stevenson, "If we ever lose one at Bernie, I'm taking it." So, uh, Ms. Patrice Kilgore was the secretary and she was awesome, she was wonderful. I loved working with her. She was a great addition and a great assistant to me in summer school. So as we go through the next slide, it shows the hours that both the middle school and the high school summer school program ran. This is the first time, there was a change from last year's summer school program to this year. Um, my understanding from last year, the students went for three-week sessions. This summer, the summer school program was a six-week session. And the students had to come June twenty-fourth through August the first and they had to take classes during those timeframes. Some students took classes during each of those time periods. Some students elected to take classes one of those time periods or two of those time periods. So every student was not allowed to spend all three time periods in summer school, it just depended on their needs. So as we go to the very next slide, the next slide will list the staff members that worked in the high school summer school program. And I do have to make one correction where it says, "Mr. Jones," that was actually Mr. Howard. And I will make that correction in my PowerPoint at a later date. Mr. Jones was there, he's a math certified teacher and he taught algebra. During the high school summer school enrollment process, we had approximately a hundred and thirty-one students that registered for the high school portion. Some of the class numbers were low, so what we had to do was do a combination and have some of the teachers teach online. But what was critical and most important, if a teacher was teaching an online class, it was important to me that that teacher was certified in the area that they taught online. So if there was a student, that student could get additional assistance with the subject matter from the certified online teacher. So you will see, for instance, Mrs. Voveneck as a certified English teacher. She was only allowed to teach online English. Uh, if you see Mr., where it says, "Mr. Jones," which is actually Mr. Howard, he was a math certified teacher, only allowed to teach math online. If you see Mr. Hervella, a certified social studies teacher, was only allowed to teach the social studies subjects online. And that was critical for students. Some students had never taken a class online, some students who had, but if they had, if they needed additional assistance, it was good to have a certified teacher in that subject area teaching that online class. And as we go to the next slide, it will show all the courses that were taught and the number of students that registered in those areas. Where you see low numbers, once again, those were classes that were combined. So for instance, Mr. Hervella took all the social studies students and taught them in his period online. All right, we can go to the next slide. We also had students out of the district to enroll in summer school. And you see the numbers there, from Grove, Grove Point North, Old Park High, West Bloomfield, Covino, J.J. Pierce, which is in Texas. And that was actually a student who had moved to Southfield, who is now in Southfield Public Schools, but as of the summer, he had not registered yet. And so, all his documentation had to go back to J.J. Pierce High School in Texas. But now, my understanding, he's currently at Southfield High. We had students from Southfield Christian, Martin's King, Cass Tech, and Walt Lake Northern. Next slide. In the high school summer school program, students are eligible to come in for grade replacement, meaning they could substitute or take the grade that they currently had on their transfer and replace it with the grade that they earned in summer school. In order to, in order to be eligible for that, they must have received a seventy-five percent or better on the final exam for that course. So you will see ninety-four Southfield Public School students registered for grade replacement. Knowing the qualifications of the seventy-five percent or better on the final exam, seventy-one of those students qualified. The out of district students, there are eighteen of them, and ten of them qualified for online. Two students dropped out of summer school. One had a conflict with a job and the other one's family had a conflict, so that student had to leave. So those were the only drops to summer school. And then, once again, the online courses that were taught. The next slide. The middle school program were students from, only from Southfield Public Schools who were assigned to come to the middle school intervention program by a counselor or by the administrator of their school because during the school year, they may have ended that class with a failing grade. So they were asked to participate in the summer school program. And that ended up being a total of thirty-two of our middle school students who attended the first period and the second period of summer school. There were about three students who registered for the third period and since the numbers were so low, we changed their schedule and moved them into period one or two. And those classes were taught math in the ELA class, one taught by Mr. Howard, who's a certified math teacher, and one taught by Mr. Mason, who's a certified English teacher. and one taught by Mr. Mason, who's a certified English teacher. But overall, the program was very successful. Kids came in, there were no problems in summer school. They went to class, they did what they were expected to do. The teachers came in, the teachers were on time, and the teachers were in the class giving the students what they needed in order to get back and improve their GPAs for this particular school year. And all documentation was sent to each counselor, each out of district school, so that the counselors would have all of that information upon arrival for this school year. I haven't received any phone calls, so I'm assuming all information was received and everything was, went well. So thank you for the opportunity, it was a great summer.
Thank you, Ed. And I just want to say, this is a dynamic team and I'm grateful for their, their hard work this summer and the experiences that they provided for our students. Thank you. That concludes my report.
I have a question. How about the kids out of district, out of Oakland County? Is something you have wiped on to attend our summer school?
No, they never attended any numbers, but we've always had them come from Oakland County. They paid for the course.
My question was more or less a comment. On page five of Mr. Jones's survey of the three, the grades three through eight, I was a little disappointed that it wasn't higher for the, very much and mostly. And was wondering maybe next time, we could do three, grade three through five and grade six through eight. Because sometimes our middle school students are a lot less happy about extended education over the summer. Whereas grade three through five might have given it a really stellar, stellar, uh, gourmet result.
What, maybe the summer, the summer result?
Yeah, the three through eight, because it was real high on not much.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm thinking that's those middle schools do that. Seven straight.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so very much.
Okay, and now, uh, we'll turn the meeting over for the Head Start Report and Mr. Martin. Oh, who's that, Cat? Hey.
Head Start. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm. Uh, the Policy Council of the Head Start met yesterday on Monday, September eighth, two thousand thirteen, at nine o'clock AM. After a go around to identify the participants, there was not a quorum presence. And so the minutes from the last meeting were not approved. Ms. Janet Hill, is she here tonight? No. Uh, commented that Pussey Head Start Center for Early Education met the policy and practice requirements for the high school program accreditation. Uh, this is a yearly occurrence. They noticed a reward from the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children and families was received. The federal grant for the year July one, two thousand thirteen, to June thirty, two thousand fourteen, will be one million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, twenty-six dollars. This is less than last year because of sequestration by the federal government. Caused us to lose money. Ms. Hill commented that the Head Start Program Report is completed. The report contains information such as funding, enrollments like funding forms, program options, options, for example, full day or part day, classes, type of eligibility, language at home, program staff and qualifications, et cetera, and so on. The report is due October fourteenth and it's, um, early enough to get in on time. Oh, uh, she said we have corrected our deficiencies. Ms. Hill passed out calendars for September and October. Head Start is in good shape. Our next request for redesignation will be put together October first. It will be submitted in March for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and we will have the results in June or July. We will ask for additional funds for birth to five years old, but we may not receive them. Ms. Hill has requested additional funds from the federal government for an additional class, but we have not received the grant. Ms. Hill informed us that one main reason for Head Start's popularity in Southfield is the fact that the curriculum is aligned with the International Baccalaureate Program, making it an excellent start for Southfield preschoolers. Today is ori-, yesterday, it was yesterday, was orientation day for parents of Head Start students. Attendance is required. Seventeen to twenty-five parents per day have been showing up for enrollment. And enrollment is at the maximum one hundred ninety. Parents must understand that Head Start enrollment has federal guidelines that must be followed. They cannot just show up on the day of class and expect their students to be enrolled. The next Policy Council meeting will be on October fourteenth, November three is parent community election, and November twenty-four is Policy Council Office election. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cat. Um, now we get to the fun part and we get to the action items. And at this time, I would take a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
Hold on.
Remove and supported, and there is a question. Given that, uh, Secretary, if you please come to the vote.
Yes, Mr. President, I brush the dust off of your binder. I'll start with myself, yes. Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty Poole?
Yes.
Trusty Lewis?
Yes.
Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Buchanan?
Yes.
You name it.
Thank you. And we just approved five hundred sixty million dollars in bills being paid. That is, uh, uh, next we have on report fifty-two oh five, the wireless network project. Motion to open and approve. So, the report, the move was supported. Uh, we've already had a presentation on this, uh, previous. Do you have any further questions? Given that, the Secretary, if you please come to the vote.
Trusty Poole?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Trusty Lewis?
Yes.
Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trusty Buchanan?
Yes.
Six and one extension.
That's good.
What's that?
Your extension.
Do you want to explain the, yes, extension?
Well, my extension, uh, I have a relationship with one of the people who, uh, submitted a request for this. And so I abstained.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, now we have report fifty-two oh six, I think a motion to open and approve the resolution for publicly funded health insurance contributions.
In accordance with the, um, Public Act one fifty-two, uh, that changed the way that the districts are required, public employers are required to pay for, uh, health insurance annually, we will need to take a vote, um, to do differently than the requirements under the Act, which is the HRC Act. We have aligned ourselves into eighty-twenty, uh, split between the requirement of the district and the employee for payment of their healthcare, the medical portion of their healthcare. Uh, this comes annually, as long as we stay in that perspective, and then is required by the board to be in compliance with that.
Are there any questions? Given that, the Secretary, if you please come to the vote.
Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Lewis?
Yes.
Trusty Poole?
Yes.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Trusty Buchanan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board President, I just wanted to mention this in our, in board. Uh, this Act only requires that the district, uh, that the district employee pay twenty percent of their medical portion of the benefits. Uh, naval partners that we, uh, negotiated with, as well as the, uh, unaffiliated members who don't have, uh, union representation, have agreed to pay, uh, twenty percent of the total medical costs, uh, I'm sorry, the total healthcare costs to include dental vision and all other lines of insurance as well. So that is going to stay with the district and something that the employees have been doing all along.
Thank you. At this time, I take a motion to open and approve report fifty-two oh seven, the resolution for Southfield Youth Assistance Volunteer Management.
Here we open our report fifty-two oh seven.
Remove and supported.
Now, without a speak to that. This is a resolution that this board does on a yearly basis. The youth assistance program is a partnership between the Oakland County Court, the City of Southfield, and Southfield Public Schools. We all come together to make this program happen. So when they name or recommend their board of directors, each entity must approve it. The individuals who have been recommended to serve are Yolanda Haynes, Timothy Ruckus, Nikki Stelger, Paula Gray, Molly Kovar, Shamir Taylor, Donna Colley, Nicole Rice, Andrea Robinson, Leslie Love Smith, and Sean Wood.
Well, I would like to thank each one of them for stepping up and standing for, um, children in Southfield and later village, uh, they're taking on these tasks. I mean, further questions, Congress? Given that, the Secretary, please come to the vote.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trusty Poole?
Yes.
Trusty Lewis?
Yes.
He's right?
Yes.
I understand?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then we, uh, that, things as our course, we're all in action items. Uh, we come to information items, which do not require the board action. Uh, the report fifty-two oh eight is the first of the void. Uh, these are items that were purchased that are small, low threshold, that requires board, um, board vote. Uh, it's up to the discretion of the superintendent of administration. Um, reports fifty-two oh nine through twelve, though, um, I, I would like to have someone come to the podium and give a community an update on, uh, the status of the tranquil surfacing and some of the other items. Mr. Gregory, if you, if you mind.
Good evening, uh, Board, uh, Dr. Cook Robinson, members of the audience, faculty, uh, parents and, uh, community. Thank you for the opportunity to explain a couple of things. Um, we had a number of projects that went on this summer. Um, we still have a couple that are still in the process of being completed because we did, uh, the late start on a couple of them because of the bidding process. But I'm happy to say that a number of them have been completed. For instance, uh, the high school track resurfacing at both Southfield Laitrup and Southfield High has been completely, uh, finished. Uh, it's a process that, uh, has been needed for a couple of years. It's a process that, uh, the track surface is about twelve years old, where they had to do some repairing of the surface, put two coats of the new track on there and then strip it. And it's been completed, it looks fantastic. So, uh, something well needed and now we can continue to maintain it. The tennis courts, uh, over here at Southfield High, as you know, that was a, a big safety item. We had a lot, a lot of cracks in the surface. Uh, some of them were an inch and a half, uh, high. Uh, it was, it is a real safety issue. Um, so they did get the asphalt down. Um, the asphalt does have to cure for two weeks before they can put the, uh, the color down there on the, uh, the tennis courts. Uh, that was, uh, the two weeks was up, uh, on Monday, yesterday. All right, so we're looking forward to them this week, uh, putting it fencing up, uh, putting it a color on. I've worked with, uh, Mr. Horan and, uh, Anika, our athletic director at, uh, Southfield High. And the colors they chose were blue, imagine that, uh, with a green outline. And we got a, uh, a picture from the architect to show us a couple of different, uh, options. And that's what they chose, so that's, that's what it will be. So, um, we're looking forward to having that completed around the fifteenth of September, uh, as long as we don't run any additional problems. Um, the, uh, MacArthur parking lot is completely finished. Uh, that's been an ongoing, uh, issue here the last year or so. I know our wonderful superintendent, uh, had a, a bent rim on that parking lot herself. Uh, we tried to stay up, up on the patching, but it was just, it was just too bad. We did, we did have to undercut the rear section of it. It had some, uh, backfill in there, but, um, that's fully completed. It's all had new striping on it, it, it really looks fantastic. It's, uh, it's something that's really been needed for a couple of years now. Um, the Southfield Laitrup, uh, pool filtering system, uh, that has been completed as well. Uh, the filter tanks that were in there initially were large steel diameter tanks. And, uh, we couldn't put our finger in the deck anymore. Um, they had rusted through in numerous places. We've welded badges to them. Uh, it got to the point where we could no longer, um, feel confident about, about repairing them. So, um, we put it out for bid, hired an architect, he designed the new system. Uh, I stated that I do not, do not want steel tanks. I want fiberglass or plastic. So, we had two large tanks before, they were, uh, probably about eight foot in diameter. Now we have seven smaller tanks that are plastic, okay? And, uh, although all the fittings and the piping is PVC also, so we don't have to worry about that. Uh, and that system is completely done, looks fantastic, and it's, uh, a lot easier service, uh, these new filtering tanks. So, uh, like I said, we do have, uh, a couple other projects going. That entire roof is almost completed. Uh, we ran into some additional problems there that delayed us a little bit. Uh, in the tennis courts, like I said, it should be wrapping up here in another week or so. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I meant to, you know, please clarify, I was at the abbey when we was, um, providing the, uh, equipment. Talked about Leonard, there's a lot of equipment and, um, construction equipment in the back for our Leonard. And parents were asking, you know, why was it there and what was going on? Because we often walk to that school and children spend play area there. So, um, we just want to make sure that parents are aware that that equipment belongs to the City of Southfield. And it's there temporarily.
It's, uh, here's what, uh, why that equipment is there, okay? Um, that school, along with Eisenhower, I patrol, you know, a couple times a week. I'm looking for vandalism, graffiti, broken windows and so on. Uh, and the city had called me and asked me if they could have their contractor, okay, it's not actually the City of Southfield's equipment, it's their contractor's equipment, if they could use that area as a staging area. They're doing sidewalk and road repairs in that general area, in that neighborhood. And I said, uh, check with, uh, Mrs. Trump, and she was fine with it. I said, I don't have a problem with it as long as it's, you know, you clean it up and return it to, to back to normal. Uh, they are wrapping up, uh, that, that project right now, so I look forward to having that equipment out in there in the next couple of weeks. But it's not something we park there, so to speak. That area is open and the city could ask if, if we could do it. And like I say, that's why it's there.
Mostly clean the backside up, there's a, kind of broken glass right there.
It, yeah, that is sometimes an ongoing problem. Uh, you know, from the fourth of July, we get a, around the fourth of July, we get a lot of, um, fireworks, debris from the fireworks and so on and so forth. So, um, you know, that's something that we have to constantly stay on top. Sometimes I'll have a, uh, somebody drop a bag of garbage or an old TV or something like that over there too. So try to stay on top and try to keep it cleaned up for the neighborhood. And, uh, let's say, I encourage, uh, any neighbors or anybody in that area, uh, sees something suspicious, uh, whether it be Leonard or Eisenhower, uh, please give us a call. Or call the police and they, uh, they've got our number and we'll take care of it, so.
That's why I need to go outside, just to make sure, take care of it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, now we come to the public participation portion of the meeting. Uh, anyone that wishes to address the board, if you'd please allow, group power. Is there, there any group power, anybody wants to address the board?
He didn't want number eleven. No. He didn't, uh, make on the.
Well, yeah, I don't think that that was, uh, in, uh, when we were still. It is, is someone with the, uh, information on, uh, the high school, uh, University High School and Academy of Service equipment. Anyway.
Yeah, um, I actually was over there tonight. Did everyone hear me?
No.
The people at home, they were doing my mission at the mic.
Uh, I was over there tonight and walked through with, um, Ms. Williams to see all the new things that are going over at the university and went and see the new equipment that they put into cafeteria. And they put up some extra serving stations for, they had like a taco station, they have a salad station. So that was all the new equipment that we did so that we could open that up, put the serving area across the hall and expand the whole area and it, it really does look great.
Someone was going to set up at, at high and at, like, the. Someone wanted to set up at, at High and at Laker, to develop at the same food station. Okay, getting back to the public participation. I want to get there. Hey, I'm trying to move. I did want to, we've talked about everybody else here tonight, but who we didn't recognize is our partners from Champion who are here tonight. And if you could just please stand and be recognized, we are so proud of you. That is one of the partnerships that has really worked for the district. And we guys do a wonderful job with our kids both before and after school, and we thank you for providing that great service to us, and so welcome back.
Thank you.
Now, we get to public participation. But if there's nobody come out in the car, then I don't need to talk about it here. Then we get to board matters, where the board has the ability to now adjust the community and discuss anything that just comes to my mind. So, we'll start with you, Mr. Cool.
Welcome back. Every year, it seems like it gets better and better. After last year, I thought it couldn't get any better, I should say the year before. But, you know, I came to the board back in two thousand nine, and I thought the best thing we could do was keep the doors open and wheels on. But every year, I've seemed to have been astounded with what we were able to accomplish as a district. So, we'll mark this year with where we are now, and see where we end up in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Some of the district highlights were district-wide accreditation through NCA, advanced education. University high school students ranked highest performing in Elkhorn County by the state of Michigan. Don't forget about that little news we heard ago that they talked about, university high schools being six hundred and forty thousand. I researched it, there's nearly forty thousand high schools in this country. Named state champions by Bridge magazine for our high graduation rate. Class of two thousand thirteen earned more than thirteen million dollars in college scholarships. Year before that was ten million. Dual enrollment, all costs covered by the district. National awards for teacher development and differentiated instruction. Superintendent Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson is the state superintendent of the year. Award-winning athletics, music, journalism, engineering, business programs, international backglow programs take well. STEM programs starting in the sixth grade. I take that on personally because I had a chance to entertain a dozen or so college instructors from India. And as you all know, technology in the world today is centered around India. Well, they brag, oh wow, we started STEM in high schools with our, with our students. So, I, well, our district started STEM, and they're bragging. All of a sudden, I've got this big focus, just took all the conversation from over here, this guy over here, really, tell me more about the program. So, we, we accomplished a lot, and at a time probably will be marked in history as one of the worst rape concessions this country has ever seen. My colleagues and I are proactive. We took it upon ourselves to represent this district in Washington, Washington, this year. And it was an effort to advocate for our students here in this district, as well as advocating for other, the over fifty-five million students across this country. Now, Congress is back on September ninth, but for us, we were, we're actually advocating for a few things, safer schools. We advocated against sequestration. We specifically told our congressional constituents, absolutely no cuts of public education. And we have a very sensitivity to cutting funding to special education. We had the conversation with the superintendent, board president, and I definitely have been advocating for that. As a result of that, I've gotten a lot of correspondence back and forth from our senator, as well as other congressional members over in Washington for that. So, they heard us. They heard us. Got a letter from Senator Debbie Stavina over the summer, and she writes this. Dear Michael, thank you for contacting me about special education programs. I agree with you that the federal government should fulfill its commitment to special education. Special education is a vital part of our public education system. It ensures that all students have access to education in an appropriate learning environment that is best fit their needs. Congress made a commitment to special education in nineteen seventy-five by passing Individuals with Disabilities Act, EFA, which requires the federal government to fund forty percent of special education costs. Unfortunately, the commitment has never been met. As you may know, as a result of the Budget Control Act, indiscriminate cuts to federal programs, known as sequestration, took effort this year. In Michigan, about ninety-five hundred students would be affected by the effects of these cuts. I am pleased that the Senate passed a budget that would reverse sequestration and instead of, might, instead make smarter choices that would strengthen our economy and help us create jobs. As Congress considers education reform in the coming months, I will keep your views in line and share them with my colleagues on the Senate Education Committee. Thank you again for contacting me, please do not hesitate to do so again in my office, if my office can be of assistance to your district. Signed, Debbie Stavina, United States Senator. Board President was me relaxed at, Debbie Stavina, Earl Evans, John Kinders Jr., John Bingle, Gary Peters, just to name a few. So, they're hearing us out there. And just to add, as I close, the Senate Operations Committee bill for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, funding for labor, health, human services, and education, its committee bill, Senate Bill twelve eighty-four, would stop budget cuts from sequestration, restore funding allocations to pre-sequester levels, and also provide increases for special education, a hundred and sixty-eight million dollar increase in Title I grants for disadvantaged students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Mr. Lewis?
To the citizens of Southville, Southville-Laterbrook, Southville Township, I would like to say good evening. I want to begin by saying that I only have one boss, and that boss is the people. I don't look at myself as being a public official, but I look at myself as a servant, and I'm here to serve the people. In two thousand and eight, in two thousand and twelve, I financed my own campaign. I didn't receive any corporate donations or any endorsements. In two thousand and ten, I maintained the campaign promises that I made in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eight, I went to the community and told the community that if I was elected, I would oppose privatization. In two thousand and ten, I voted against privatization. In two thousand and twelve, I attended an event in Washington, D.C. I went to Capitol Hill and advocated for public education on the federal level. I advocated for public spaces, uh, uh, school spaces, and second amendment rights, I was second amendment right here. Also want to point out that my service on the state is one hundred percent pro donor. I don't give, I don't give a salary because I don't want that, I want to serve the people. Plus, I've been in public office five years, about four and a half, four or five years. I've only taken one business trip, and that was to Washington, D.C., if I want to fight for public education on the federal level. The reason why, because I don't want to be a taxpayer or taxpayer's father, and I don't want to accept a business trip. Also, in two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve, I didn't do one fundraiser because I don't believe that public office is just about raising money. I believe it's about raising the community and raising families. And that's where I want to be, to my, to my, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Cat?
Uh, yes, I want to tell you that I'm very proud to be on the Board of Education for Southville. I'm proud of the staff and the job they do. I'm proud of the superintendent, you know, top four in the country. I'm just wonderfully happy to be here. And I want to tell you that we're having an election on November the fifth. On November the fifth, you are going to be asked to renew the village. Without that village, we cannot operate these schools. You have to get out and vote yes for renewal, and you have to tell your friends to vote yes. Now, when you look at the ballot, don't be confused. It will say an increase to eighteen mils. This is an increase from zero, because the old village will have expired. So, it's basically a renewal, and the ballot will not say that, but that's what it is. We cannot function without that renewal, and I want you to tell everybody that. You want the schools, you have to vote for the village. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I think there was an assessment. I too will be visiting PTA, in terms of parents, to encourage them to go get the village, let them know how important it is. And I would also be careful in the neighborhood, because often have, I think, parents will like to see, basically make contact, so they'll be able to contact with you, communicate with you, and understand what you're trying to, to tell them. So, I will be with my neighbors as well to support the village.
As a board member, I too believe strongly that our goal and our job, among other things, is to advocate for public education and also advocate for our public schools. And as a result of that, I will be lobbying and committing residents that I know of to take a hard, honest look at the school district in which they pay into year in and year out, and ask them, are they willing to risk it by just leaving it up to chance? Or are they going to put a stake in the ground and say, I'm with you, I'm fighting for public education? And the way it begins is by funding at least fifty percent of our operating, operating budget. So, that's all I want to say about that. And then in clothing, I have had an opportunity with this board to participate in a very rigorous, and we love that word around Southville Public Schools, a rigorous retreat, where we were able to really delve into some of the things that the members of the community are seeing in the newspaper as it relates to testing and cut scores. I encourage each and of, each one of you, whenever we offer workshops or any kind of meeting for parents and communities, to come out and learn about the, the way that we're being tested, the, the different mechanisms they use to basically undercut all of the effort that our teachers and our principals are, are doing on a daily and yearly basis. We just encourage our parents to make a special effort and come out because not only do the school board members have to advocate, but we need our residents to advocate. The more voices singing the same song, the louder it'll be. So, I thank you all for the opportunity to serve you, and let's continue to fight for public education.
I'd like to thank the community for their support the last four years on the board. I too served with Mr. Cool in two thousand nine, and I've seen the changes. I too have been in Southville for over twenty-six years. I too have seen the changes. Two of my students went through Southville-Laterbrook and Southville High, and they both are doing tests. So, we all know what our students can do if they step up to the plate. We will not lower our standards here in Southville. We will only get better, get better, from good to great. That's where we are headed. If anyone doubts that, then you can speak to me, one of them. Anyone in this community. Like I like to say, I've served my community, I've served my state, I've served my country. So, I'm not here trying to advocate for Rand Swinn. I plan to do what I have promised the community to do until two thousand sixteen, which at that time I will decide whether to run again. Now, you will hear different things from different board members at different points in time throughout the year. I think sometimes we need to be careful what we say as board members, because had we not privatized, as our Mr. Lewis suggested, we would not be where we are today financially as a district, and I'll just move on to that point. Just want to make that point. So, we have to be good stewards. Yes, we're entitled to our votes, we're entitled to our community. And I think we have to do what I call lessons learned, and look back and say, hmm, okay, I made that decision, you know, can't stand by it, it wasn't the right decision at that time, that's fine, I can't speak for this, I can only speak for me, Rand Swinn. I appreciate all the work that this board does. You don't speak from the things that we get into behind the scenes, not always friends, but it's not adversarial, and we move on, we make, we act as a board. Anyone not acting as a board, the resolutions and our powers of the vote will only cause problems. So, the team did great work out in the community. I ask two ditto with Mr. Fernance Robinson and the rest of the board, as I said, that it supports the village, it's only for our student system and our students. I would also like for Dr. Robinson to schedule appointments for all of us board members to go through the schools, look at the new changes and the redesign of our schools, as well as to the improvement of our students. Thank you.
Wow. Well, I'd like to echo sentiments of all of my colleagues in regards to the upcoming village. This is where, you know, the rubber meets the road. This is where we actually put our money, you know, behind what we're talking about. Being able to finance our education, we're making a statement about our community, about what we value and what we hold dear. This community has always been a community that values family and education. Now, I just want to point out that you can look around at other communities where the school districts are not doing as well, and where you see a failing school district, you'll see a failing community. It's never the situation that a successful school district is surrounded by a failing community. It's quite the opposite. And that's because, that's the main priority of the community, is, is, I mean, of, of any village, of any gathering, is to take care of its young. And this is how we do it, by promoting education. So, it's very important that we get this village passed, that people understand, you know, we're going to get out here and we're going to hear the I-hurds, okay? We're going to hear a lot of that, I-hurds. It's up to us to straighten that out and let people know exactly what takes place in Southville Public Schools. Four Gates Millennium Scholars in the past five years, okay? High performing high schools at, I mean, all of our high schools are performing at a very high rate, including S-Rac, where in a lot of other communities, they're alternative high schools, where they warehouse their, their mystery of students. That's actually where we get our students back on track. We save lives over at S-Rac. It's pretty amazing, if anybody ever has a chance to go over there. We had somebody from the other view on public education, who actually come to us, and I wanted to make sure that this gentleman, he's actually the one, the architect behind a lot of the changes that are taking place in public education. changes that are taking place in public education. I wanted to show him what public education looks like, especially in a community that looks like ours. There's not another community in this state, and I'll venture to say probably not in the country, that looks like ours, that has the kind of success rate that we have. So, I wanted to show him that. So, we kind of pulled some kids over to the side, we were talking to them about, you know, you have problems like that. And I could hear him talking, just seems like, no, you know, we have problems like that here. You know, here, it's focused on education, it's about turning lives around. The young people that go there and are committed to it, they understand, this is their chance to change their past. So, I bring that up because it's important in that, that just tells you how Southfield as a community values education in all of our children, all of our children. The high achievers, the ones that might need a little more than others. But this community does a great job in taking into account all of our children who need education. Uh, I want to thank you all for stepping up and, 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 you know, filling that role. I, I sat in that seat once, I know it's difficult. Uh, you're going to be out there seeing another side of the community, probably that you hadn't seen before, or don't anticipate seeing. But it's time for us to bring those people in too, because the main thing is they can't go against fact. You can have your opinion, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but you're not entitled to your own set of facts. And the facts are there, that we've got to production, you know? We have a, a, a school district to be proud of, to uphold. And I want everybody to feel that same kind of energy and that same kind of love for this district, because this district has come very, very long way in my nine years on this board. I was here in the, what I want to call the dark days, when everybody said that Southfield was going down. And one of the things that, the commitment that I made as a trustee is that, as long as I sit on this board, there will never be an emergency manager in Southfield. And I've held true to that. Along the way, I've had to make some decisions, some very, very difficult decisions, in order to accomplish that. And my wife can attest to this, there were nights that I just walked before because I could not sleep. But those decisions were decisions that I could not just, you know, come up with an ideology, an ideology that doesn't fit the situation. The situation was, we were in dire financial straits. We called in all of our partners and said, how do we do this? And the only thing that we could do at that time to save this district, which, school districts are for children, okay? They're not for adults. They are for children. We're in the business of teaching and learning, and everything else is just supporting that effort, including us, everyone here. So, the most important are our duties and our teachers. So, we come path on that, and we're here now. We made it through those dark times, and we're now at a period that we can look around and we can see the, the community that were afraid to make the tough decision and now paying, uh, paying for that with financial issues that are facing them. And it's going to, you know, it's going to be surprising in the next couple of months when we start to hear about what's going on in some of the districts that you may think are in better financial strength than we are, but they're not. It's going to be very interesting to watch what happens, how it unfolds in the months to come. But for us, we've done, we, we've come a long way, we've made the hard decisions, now it's about maintaining. And that's what this vote is, it's about maintaining what we've established in Southfield, is what we hold dear, and it's the education of our children. So, on November the fifth, make sure that you go out and you vote, and you get your neighbors to vote, and that you support this millage because it's important for the survival not just of our school district, but of our entire community. Okay. Future meetings, September twenty-fourth, we have student hearings here in the boardroom. And October the eighth, seven o'clock is our next regular board meeting. We have to go into closed sessions, we have some issues that we have to discuss, and we will update. So, we're, um, we're going to now adjourn in twelve.
The president, will you call him after this?
No, we don't have.
Not this one? You have to have permission.
You had your turn, so we, we're trying to close the meeting, so it's time, it's time to move on. So, at this time, we're going to go, I'll take emotion to go into closed session.
Of course.
Okay, we're moving now to go into closed session. So, everybody's coming out tonight, and let's make this a year to remember being Southwood Public Schools. Thank you all for coming out.